The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Not called?
No.
Okay.
Ever calls.
The Town of Burlington will be holding the July twenty first, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Planning Board Hybrid Meeting due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID nineteen virus. As such, the Governor issued an executive order on March twelfth, twenty twenty, authorizing remote meetings under General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty, and extended by executive order on March, excuse me, and extended by Chapter twenty-two of the Acts of twenty twenty-two, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Those seeking to participate remotely may do so via the following. They can go to townofburlingtonwebx.com and our meeting code tonight, two three three six five two three zero nine zero one nine, and our password is sixteen forty-five. You can also join us by phone, six one seven three one five zero seven zero four. This meeting is being broadcast on BCAT, which you can find on Comcast Channel ninety-nine, RCM fifteen, and Brez in forty-one. It's also being streamed on BCAT Live on the BCAT Government Facebook page. The public will be able to make comments during the hearing, as always, during the time for public comment. Questions can be asked via WebEx, WebEx Q and A function, but we do ask that all persons wishing to ask a question, identify themselves ahead of time.
Thank you.
So I hope you all can appreciate we have a twenty-two-page agenda this evening. I ask that everyone please be brief, concise, patient. You know, it's going to take us a while to get through everything, but, you know, if we can really just focus on the topics at hand, if there is some wants to speak on a specific topic, and we have multiple people who are representing a neighborhood, I'd ask that one representative for that neighborhood, assuming you all agree with that person. We do have some continuances and withdrawals at this point. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take Items seven Y, seven Z, seven double A, and seven double B, and seven double C, together and out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Item Y is a continued public hearing application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section four point two point seven point four. Laboratories engaged in research, experimental and testing activities, including but not limited to the fields of chemistry, electronics, engineering, geology, non-biologic medicine, and physics of the zoning bylaws. Twenty-two Terry Avenue is the applicant, or AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Item Z is a continued public hearing application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section four point two point seven point four point one. Life science laboratories engaged in research, prototype manufacturing, experimental and testing activities, including but not limited to the fields of pharmaceutical biomedical technologies and engineering, life systems technologies, environmental and biomedical devices, bio safety level four. Laboratory system five of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention are prohibited in Burlington of the zoning bylaws. Twenty-two Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. AA is the continued public hearing application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section four point two point seven point four point two. Life science laboratories engaged in the manufacture of life science technologies and medicines for commercial production to the market, including but not limited to the fields of pharmaceuticals, biomedical technologies, and engineering, life science, life systems technologies, environmental biomedical devices, bio safety level four laboratories is defined by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, which are prohibited in Burlington of the zoning bylaws. Twenty-two Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. BB is a continued public hearing application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section four point two point seven point nine. Hazardous and toxic materials, chemicals used for storage, transport, disposal, or discharge of the zoning bylaws. Twenty-two Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Finally, CC is continued public hearing application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section four point two point seven point eleven. Hazardous and toxic materials, chemicals used for storage, transport, disposal, or discharge of the zoning bylaws. Twenty-two Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue these items to the Planning Board meeting of September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, as requested by the applicant's attorney in an email dated July twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. For those in the audience or at home, this property will be discussed later on in the agenda. They are continuing some of these special permits until a tenant is determined. Others will be discussed later on in the agenda.
Madam Chair, could you ask if there is anyone in the audience for twenty-two Terry?
Is there anyone?
Thank you.
Great.
Just discussion if there were people.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take Item seven DD out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item DD is a continued public hearing application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section four point three point two point twenty-three point two. Solar energy system, ground-mounted, of the zoning bylaws, three September Lane, Sunrun Installation Services is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. The Planning Board hereby accepts the applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice the application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section four point three point two point twenty-three point two. Solar energy system, ground-mounted, of the zoning bylaw for property at three September Lane, as requested by the applicant in an email dated July twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
I'd also like to make a motion to take Item seven EE out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item EE is a continued public hearing, proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw and map, Town Center signage map, zoning bylaw review committee, signed by the zoning bylaw review committee and the signage subcommittee. I believe Sally would you like to join us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have with me a, two copies of the signed request to withdraw the proposed zoning bylaws. They were submitted as part of a package, and some of the package has been processed, but we'll come back with more at some point in the future after we get over some hurdles.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that the Planning Board hereby accept the applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice the proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw and map, Town Center signage map, zoning bylaw review committee, signage subcommittee, as requested by the applicant, and further agree to open the Town Center rules and regulations at the meeting of August or September to take part in a discussion with the Select Board and ZBRC regarding the process and/or committee structure to review design and signage in the Town Center.
So, Madam Chair, I wanted to discuss the motion a little bit. The motion was crafted after talking to another member of our member in the signage committee in terms of kind of where we might be going, and if this is the right place to put it or somewhere else, that's fine, but there was definitely a discussion that was had that withdrawing the signage map, but certainly wanting to move forward the discussions about the Town Center Committee and how we're going to address review of signage. So that's where this language came from. It doesn't need to be exactly this or part of this exact motion, but I know there was a desire by those involved to make sure the discussion continues. Great. Thank you.
Just a little further discussion on the motion, and that is, I'm part of that subcommittee because I'm a ZBRC member. And I feel that this Planning Board, it was very interested in signs in the downtown Town Center area, and when that comes about, I'd appreciate it if we could get a couple of really interested people to help us out. Thanks.
Sounds good. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Let's move on to citizens' time. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an item that is not currently on our agenda? Anyone online?
I'm not seeing anyone, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you. Announcements, please.
Sure. So we all want to welcome our newest Assistant Planner Caleb Zimmerman. He started, I think about a week or two ago, and he is a recent graduate of UMass. Their planning program, so, go UMass. And, yeah.
Planning and master's program.
Planning and master's program. So we're excited to have him and see.
That isn't my fire tonight.
Oh, yes, we said to Caleb, the fastest meeting we've ever had when we appointed Caleb, and the longest meeting, we're back to back. This is going to be a real short meeting. We're moving things along tonight, folks. We don't want to scare him off too soon. Welcome, Caleb.
Thank you.
So next, there's a Sculpture Park Committee meeting on August second at four P. M. Location TBD. Do you have an update?
It's actually going to be an online meeting, and the call-in information will be on the town calendar.
Celebrate Burlington Day is August sixth, from eleven to nine at the Town Common. The ZBRC will be having a meeting August tenth at six thirty in the Annex Basement and also via Zoom. And I think that's all I have thus far.
Transportation Committee on the third.
Oh, sorry. Ernie, something, you know, Transportation Committee meeting will be happening on August third at six thirty via WebEx. All of those are on the town calendar. So you can...
Thank you.
And I just want to say the zoning bylaw review committee, I have to talk to the Chair, but it is the hope that we really begin conversation about the three zoning articles that were submitted that we'll talk about later in the meeting. So it would be helpful for Planning Board members to attend if they're interested in getting kind of early information on those articles. Great.
Lord &amp; Taylor. Let's talk about Lord &amp; Taylor. So there was an article published in The Globe, and in turn, it was also published in other various sources, and it discussed how there was a life science change in the Lord &amp; Taylor building. And I think it was, I'll say it was prematurely written. Decisions have not been made, but there have been discussions, but there is nothing definitive at this point in time. And, you know, there was, you know, the residence page is a great place to get a source of information these days. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we are being very clear that nothing has been decided at this stage of the game. So if there is ever any concern, the residence page is not the best place to get your source of information, and please call Planning Staff or any of the Planning Board members directly. Moving on. Paul Remond has decided to retire after his thirty-two years of service, which is amazing. So Paul has been a dedicated and passionate member since April of nineteen ninety, and it truly has been a pleasure to work alongside you. The Planning Board would like to announce that there will be an open seat on the board effective tomorrow, July twenty-second. So we are soliciting applications for that position. Applications will be accepted until August first and can be found on the Planning Board website. Retirement celebration will be set for a future date, and we'll make sure that that is very well-publicized.
I'll be there. No, but actually, my first elective office was when we went to representative town meeting from an open town meeting, and I was represented, so that was nineteen seventy-one. So I've been in an elected office or another since then, really. I'm thinking it's like fifty years or something.
That is dedication to the Town of Burlington.
But anyway, it's certainly been a pleasure serving on the Planning Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just make a...
Of course.
I just, I'm very sad that Paul's leaving. I can honestly say in the thirty-two years I worked on the boards in Burlington, I've never enjoyed working with anybody more. I've never respected, I've never admired anybody more than Paul. Paul has done, in my opinion, he's served with unwavering integrity. He's served with true values, and he's truly represented the people of Town of Burlington for every year that he's ever worked on the boards. And I thank him for that, but I'm going to miss him.
Thank you.
Your head.
Next announcement. I know July fourth was just a couple weeks ago, but we are already starting to plan the next year's celebration. So if anyone is interested in being part of that, whether it be fundraising, being a participant, anything along those lines, feel free to reach out to me directly or Nick Priest. Moving on to matters of appointment. Item A, it's a public hearing application for approval of a site plan, three Forbes Avenue. Sunil, I apologize, Sunil Prajabati, if you would please join us?
Good evening, sir.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
So I will say Mr. Prajabati did send us a very good PowerPoint presentation. In the interest of time, we did, we did, we did look at it, we condensed it slightly and did send it back. I think he has wonderful information, but just wanted to, we tried to highlight the most important aspects of the discussion here tonight.
Thank you.
But just wanted to say that there were more, and there was a lot of effort from the applicant.
Thank you, and I did review the full presentation, and it was wonderful. But again, we have...
Thank you.
We have to keep moving tonight, but if you would please, you know, kind of tell us a little bit about your presentation, if you want to just start with that, Liz, or...
So my name is Sunil Prajabati. First of all, thank you so much, Paul, for the service you provided. It's a lifetime of service. Wish I can do something like that. It's too late for me, but that's great. The presentation I prepared was in reference to the discussion we had last month. So there were like some points about like how our house blends with the neighborhood or not, so I wanted to cover those points. I mean, like, there were some issues about the lamp and landscaping and other thing. And I captured some pictures because pictures are worth a thousand words. I'm not a big narrator, but it kind of says like, you know, we are ready to make some changes if required. And that's nice that, you know, this kind of puts side by side. There was like concern about this flower bed that we have in the middle. We can, you know, we have like many options, and we are open to how we want to move forward, but, you know, we like it the way it is, but we can change things if required. And the lawn is very difficult to maintain right now for anyone who is in the town. They know that, you know, it's the water shortage and everything, you know, there is a water ban, even the town lawn is in a bad shape. So we try to keep it as much as possible. Personally, I don't like to put a lot of fertilizer and water and those things. I like to keep it like little more nature-oriented. So we want to change the landscape eventually, like something like this, that creates more like plants and something that kind of blends nicely with our neighbor's lot also, front yard, and the pine forest we have across the street also, it kind of, you know, and those are evergreens, so it will, it will like look nice overall. That's what we think. It needs some kind of like those blue lines or some kind of like a wooden retainer wall, not like a retainer wall, but it will keep the water, the land from sliding down. So we'll create some kind of like little step garden kind of thing, but not like a retainer wall, but little barrier kind of thing, so soil kind of doesn't, and the mulch we put kind of stays in the place. But that will take some time. We think like the spring will be a good time to work on those things, and then it will be a transition, like slowly, we will remove the grass and then fill it with mulch and things like that. So that's what we were thinking in that sense. And then I know they were like concerned about the lamps and something, so we just like, I walk my neighborhood all the time, and I walk from like T D Bank to Town Center here, it's only quarter mile, and we see like seven different kind of lamp post there. Well, it happens, right? I mean, you know, we kind of grow over the years and things kind of, you know, come. So every, every two side of the street, there are different lamp posts, and every hundred yard, you see different kind of lamp post, and you can see them very clearly. I've captured some pictures and those things. I just want to point out that there is a lot of diversity in our buildings, because we grew over like years. You know, if I go to California, everything looks the same, and our town doesn't look the same, and I like it, you know? It's kind of nice that, you know, we have all this mixed way of buildings. I go to Midwest and California, and the new neighborhoods, everything is like same building, one after one after one. So we feel like our house kind of blends nicely as it is without making any change. And that's what we propose, that, you know, even if you don't make any change, it will blend very nicely. If you want to make some changes, it's going to cost a lot of money, which is like really difficult for us to do right now. So we propose that, you know, it's going to blend nicely as it is. How do you want to move forward on that? So that's our write-up in the end, that kind of summarizes everything. And that's where we stand. You know, if any question, I can, I can...
Thank you. I did sign the, I did watch last meeting as I wasn't present and have signed the mall informs to stay the same, so I just wanted to inform you of that. I know some of my fellow board members felt passionately about certain things. I mean, one thing I can say is I'd prefer one of the options without the flower bed.
Okay.
You know, I think it looks cleaner.
Yeah.
But I'd like to hear from my fellow board members, and...
Do we have a picture of the shutters, like a full picture, unless I just missed?
I didn't see a picture.
I didn't see it.
Was there one in the original presentation?
If there's something, I think it's, it might be in the folder, I mean...
I mean, if you said you saw it, and it all was uniformed, I'm just curious. You don't have to waste time on me, but...
Well, I think, no, it's a good question. Can we just clarify, are you going to have the same shutters all the way across the front of the house and then on the one side that faces Cambridge Street?
We can do that if it is really required. Like, we were trying to show that there are a lot of houses, they don't have shutters, and it's not cost us way too much money to do that. Just the material alone is going to cost like three to five thousand dollars because we have to match them. Labor is also very expensive, and total cost will be like more than ten thousand dollars, plus timing will take a while. You know, right now, the material is in short supply, and finding people to do the work also takes a while. So we took a lot of pictures that says, you know, like the building that is like right next to us, that's like a big residential building, it's very tall, it puts big shadow on our house, it's right behind us, and that doesn't have any shutters, right? So we can remove the shutters and make it look like building that's behind us if required, or leave the things as it is. I mean, that's what we would prefer.
I mean, I think that the goal with the shutters is to have it uniform, to be streamlined across the whole building, not taking away from it. I think it's, you know, where it is the Town Center, we're looking for that more colonial style look, and that would, you know, enhance that same, you know, look that we're, that we aspire for.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, at the last meeting, you guys discussed the having shutters across the existing building, the front side of the new part and the Cambridge Street side, and all be consistent in color. You also discussed fixing the walkway, which I think we're seeing here, and, let's see, shutters and the light fixtures, just having them be consistent in black in color.
And, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, fellow members, but we're looking for consistent black shutters, right?
Correct.
But the ones that I've seen in a lot of places are actually just vinyl. They look like wood.
Yeah.
And I didn't think they were that expensive, actually. Maybe I'm mistaken. The vinyl small, the shell, it's like a shell on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So right now, you know, everything, the price has gone up, everything, so they are like, if you try to match with the old house, they're like ninety to one hundred fifty dollars a piece.
Two hundred and fifty dollars?
Ninety dollars to one hundred fifty dollars.
Ninety to a hundred.
Two hundred and fifty bucks. Wow.
Yeah, it's going to cost quite a bit of money, yeah, for the shutters, you know. And a lot of houses don't have them, a lot of like, like the, there's like a big colonial looking building right behind us, that doesn't have any shutters, so we thought like...
I mean, whereas a two-family, it's going to be twice as expensive because you have that many more windows, so it's...
Yeah, yeah, that's...
It's pros and cons of having a two-family in the Town Center.
Yes, it's true. Yeah, yeah.
You know.
Were we dictating color on the shutters? I didn't think...
Yeah, it has to match with the old house, right?
Just matching, yeah.
Match whatever was there, I'm sorry.
The light fixtures, you mentioned black. For the shutters, you want to make sure they're consistent in color.
Just consistent.
Right.
I thought we also mentioned design, too, because what I really don't want to see at the end is, you can have black shutters, but however they're obtained at different times, that there may be different designs. So can we add to the decision that they be consistent in color? If the board decides that to be black in design, add it to both that and the front lights, because they can always be mismatched. I think the intent here was to have them to look the same, so the color and design. Would that be okay?
I think that makes sense.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I don't think we should dictate the color of the shutters, just make sure that they all are consistent.
All the same.
Yeah. Agreed. Okay. Is there anyone else that has any...
We don't have a picture of them, do we? Want to leave it to staff to review them?
Sure. Yeah, I think staff can take a look at...
Got to prove.
At shutters.
I trust Liz and her shutter capabilities.
I would like to get a consensus on the front lawn, though, with shrubs or grass or flower bed. Again, I don't particularly care for that flower bed box in the front, so, I mean, I'm not opposed to, I think it was option three with the shrubs.
I think he's, if I may, Madam Chair, I think he's proposing to move this box right here and push it up towards the, are you proposing to remove this and move and create a new one closer to the walkway? Is that correct?
No, it's not to the...
No, 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 this is the same. Okay, never mind.
Give the same, because it can stay, and it grows nice flower, just this year is very dry, but usually it has a really good flowers and looks nice.
The good news is it will help out with the water ban, that you won't have to handwater them.
Yeah, yeah, no, we can, we can remove it.
So you're saying you prefer this one?
When we, so this will take a time, building something like this, we like put some holies or, you know, holy family or other plants, like it takes time to grow, and, you know, spring will be the time. Right now, we can't do anything about this, but that is, that is our goal, that get to the state where we don't have to put fertilizer and everything, and it's kind of self-maintained. And it looks nice with our neighbor, to our, like, neighbor who's in the CBD, has very similar setup in the front. And then, there's one picture, I think, somewhere in the...
I'm not really understand, is it, is it, is he proposing mulch or grass?
So, so the lower level, right, can be grass or mulch?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in favor of the mulch all over the front, yeah.
Well, he said, it could be grass or mulch.
Yeah.
Oh, it could be grass or mulch. I mean, but you prefer grass.
It can be grass in the beginning.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you know, and keep in mind, we understand that not everything, you know, yes, the grass, grass and the shrubs, and, you know, where you said things would be better to be planted at certain times of the year, we understand that. There is definitely going to be some type of a timeline where you have to complete all of this work.
So do we give them a year on that, then?
I would, I think a year is sufficient. Does anyone disagree?
I might go to like October, just to get...
Okay.
October, yeah.
October twenty twenty-three?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Are you ready to close the public hearing?
I am.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter?
Probably not.
Okay. A couple months.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. May I have another motion, please?
I would further like to make a motion to approve the request for approval of a site plan application of Sunil Prajabati for property located at three Forbes Avenue to permit the conversion of the property into a two-family residential structure as reflected on the plan entitled Plot Plan Three Forbes Avenue Burlington, Mass., prepared by Edward J. Farrell, dated May twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, consisting of three sheets, subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Madam Chair, do we put down the agenda for the strategy meeting in August to figure out how this doesn't happen again? Because it went through a process a little bit upside down.
Yeah, absolutely. Liz, if you could, or staff?
That'd be great.
We might want to, because we didn't put an announcement, we did talk with the Chair and Vice Chair about potentially not doing it in August to make sure if we did have a new member, potentially September.
Sure.
But I don't think we mentioned that to the board yet.[1732.72]
Thank you.
I don't think.
A retreat in, 'cause we talked about doing it October, August fourth.
Yep.
Um, but then, I know we spoke, but I, yeah, didn't convey that, so.
Thank you.
Not yet.
Okay. Um, item B is a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point two point six point nine, fast order food establishments of the zoning bylaws three Old Concord Road, Arnold Construction and Design LLC is the applicant.
Good evening.
Good evening, folks. Are we all set? Is that ready?
I'm ready when you are. If you could kindly state your name for, uh, for the record, please.
Yeah, uh, my name's Arnold. Uh, I'm the general contractor, is a general manager.
Champart.
Good evening.
Nice meeting you.
You could tell us a little bit about what you're looking to do?
Actually, we're gonna, uh, whenever we for, uh, uh, okay dog, kind of Korean hotdog at Burlington, H Mart Burlington. So this is existing building. Uh, as you can see. So.
Stack, and you?
Yeah.
Got a little bit.
The right side of, uh.
Yes, I can.
Partition is.
Please.
It's gonna be a kitchen, the kitchen. So. Yes.
Please don't do that right in front of me.
Anybody else?
Around five hundred.
More after him, and he's right.
I mean, I would talk to him with twenty-four.
Don't agitate him.
No, 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 how, how big is the, um?
A bee bite.
The restaurant.
A bee bite. There's thirties, uh, five hundred, so.
Tell us.
I think that would be helpful.
So the two partition we have within the H Mart.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they are existing, so with the, they are, you know, right now they are being used as a storage by H Mart. And so we are anticipating to convert that to little, uh, hotdog, it's kind of Korean style hotdog place. So right now, that two partition is a storage, but we're kind of, you know, you see that little gap in the middle, we're gonna open that up.
Okay.
So from the kitchen to kitchen, so we have a little more spaces, but the total space is about five hundred, five hundred.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay?
He's coming to you, bud.
He's getting off.
There you go.
Go get it.
Okay, quick. Sorry. Let's just not agitate him. I'm allergic to bees, so. And I did not bring my EpiPen tonight, so. And that's why you were hired.
Get a hero citation. Okay.
All right.
Okay, so, um.
I'm sorry, Liz, moving on.
Yes.
Um, Madam Chair, if I can interject a little bit, so.
Please.
Um, they basically, long story short, expanding the, the footprint of the food court within the existing building, what, what they said. Um, there are no seats being proposed, so this K, H Mart was, um, emergently permitted like the mall where the food court has a set number of seats. Um, and then we don't get special permits for the tenants because, because, you know, we already, you know, we mostly feel a seat. I don't know if you have it. I don't know if you have it. Um, so there are no seats being proposed as part of this, so this is just essentially an expansion of the food court. Um, the, um, there, there's no additional seats. They're gonna use the seats that exist, um, and that's kind of, that's kind of it.
Sounds pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah.
Um, I just have one question, excuse my ignorance. What is a Korean style hotdog? What does that consist of?
You know, usually, you know, the hotdog in here is just, uh, you know, the beef and then, you know, they put the bread.
Oh.
But this one, uh, inside, we, we try like different mozzarella cheese. And, uh, you know, outside, we'll put some potatoes in it.
Ooh, interesting.
So it's a little different style, you know. So it's a.
Sounds good. I mean, it sounds delicious.
You know, the name of it is a okay, but it's actually all K dog. K stand for like a Korean dog.
Oh, okay. Got it. Cool. Well, thank you for sharing that. Uh, does anyone, uh, have any questions, comments, concerns? All I'm gonna say is, if the rest of you have not been to the food court at H Mart, you should go because it's really cool. Good food. Thank you.
Yeah, I, uh, I, I've been there and, and you can't park there, so there's a big problem with that site with parking. So I know we, that we have a new applicant here, but that, that site is, is completely out of control with regard to parking everywhere on the islands, beside the islands. They put cones on there, there's a policeman there and everyone's still parking all over the place. So I know we're adding another restaurant there, but is there any way to get the owner in here to see if you can figure out what to do with the parking here? Because I, I don't know if I can approve this based on the, the, the condition that this is in, particularly in the weekends, it's just madness. You know, there's, there's cars on both sides and it's, it's, it's.
I, I agree, the parking is nightmarish on the weekend. I don't think that this is going to have any impact on the parking. Unfortunately, it's also not gonna have a positive impact on the parking. I, I agree with Bill, it would probably be a good idea for our staff to reach out to the owners of H Mart so that we can maybe start a conversation about parking and maybe there's some way that we can reconfigure the parking lot so that it's more efficient and more effective.
Yeah, I think.
I personally don't think it would impact this, what's before us right now. That's just my personal opinion.
I understand.
Our target customer are the customer actually who's coming into the H Mart.
Right.
I don't think somebody can just come in just for the condo and, you know, they're gonna park and then, you know, walk twenty minutes and things like that. So our main customer will be the people who are already in that property, shopping, kids, you know, they just to go or whatever. So I, I totally understand about the parking situation. Saturday and Sunday, you know, Friday and Saturday, it was just crazy.
Are you both with, um, with either okay dog or the contractor?
Oh, yeah, it's an.
Or you, so neither, okay, you're not H Mart, okay, 'cause I know we reached out to H Mart today.
Yes.
Um, to see if someone could join on behalf of H Mart, just in anticipation that there might be this question. But what we can, as part of this special permit, is put a condition to work with them on a parking management plan as we deal with multi, most multi-tenant or all multi-tenant areas in town um, to ensure that, you know, their employees are parking in outer areas or working with the neighboring properties. Um, it, there's, you know, not as much as you can do with customers, but what you can control, we wanna make sure people are controlling to try to alleviate any issues that they may have.
And it, and it's more, I, I, I understand fully, I, I think it may have some impact, just because it may entice people to stay there a little bit longer, so you might not get, get as much turnover, you know, people gonna be, you know, even, even though it's the same people that'll be shopping there, they'll probably stay there a little bit longer to eat, so. You know, I, I, phenomenal.
Yeah.
Place, it really is. It's a great place and I wanna make it, I wanna make sure it keeps succeeding and doing well, so.
Yeah, I, I, my thought here is that, you know, I know I've seen a policeman there occasionally, and again, to enforce the parking that's there. It's part of that plan maybe to, to on the weekends, just like we have at, at, you know, Petco and Trader Joe's, there's a policeman, you know, right there and, um, you know, enforcing the parking, so maybe that's part of that, um.
That's.
'Cause you can't, sometimes you just can't get by there with parking on both sides and, uh, I wonder if there's some data from the, uh, the police on the access there, because it's, it's, uh, yeah, it's just, um, you know, and, and, you know, everyone's not looking at the, no parking signs, 'cause everyone's just parking where they wanna. It's basically the, in my opinion, knowing every parking lot in the town, it's probably the worst parking lot, uh, you have when it's, when it gets like that.
Uh, agreed. Staff, if you can put that into the decision and, and furthermore, you know, I, I think we kind of touched on this a couple times before, but if we do have an applicant that comes in and, and they're, you know, the, the underlying property owner either should be present online or in person.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if some, if any representative from H Mart was on the webex, if they can put their hand up?
Okay, um.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, you ready for a motion?
Um, well, it is a public hearing, so is there anyone in the public that has any questions or comments about this matter? Seeing no one.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'd further like to make a motion to approve the request of Arnold Construction and Design, the applicant, for a special permit pursuant to section four point two point six point nine, fast order food as establishment of article four of the Town of Burlington zoning bylaws to permit the operation of a fast food order, first order food establishment with zero dining seats and expansion of the existing food court within the confines of the building for property located in the General Business and Aquaford District at three Old Concord Road, subject to the terms and conditions contained in exhibit A attached and as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Outstanding. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I will be coming in.
See you guys very soon.
Have a good evening, folks. Thank you.
Item C is a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section three point seven, restaurants of the ni- of the ninety Middlesex Turnpike Plan Development District zoning provisions, ninety-two Middlesex Turnpike, Strega Burlington LLC is the applicant.
That's okay, yeah. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, attorney Mark Vaughn, with Reuben Bronstein, pleased to be before you uh, representing the applicant on what I think is, um, very simple application. But as the board may recall, uh, we were before you back in the beginning of the year for this, uh, property, the same building, former Del Frisco's Grill site, to obtain a, uh, approval for them to open a Strega restaurant was the concept of the time. I think we had explained that the, the, uh, parent company, PPX Hospitality, we have, uh, Kim Dinsmore, um, with PPX who's on here, as well as our architect, uh, Jen, uh, Bulcom, if, any questions? But they, um, own Strega, Legal Seafood, and Smith &amp; Wolensky. So, uh, they, after, uh, a lot of consideration, determined that this particular location would be a, uh, more appropriate, uh, setting for Smith &amp; Wolensky, American Steakhouse, if you haven't been, it's phenomenal. Um, there are two locations presently in Massachusetts, those being in Boston and Wellesley. This would be the only third, the third location in the state, um, and they're very excited about the opportunity to reposition this for, for that brand. So from a, a site perspective, nothing's changing. The building is as is, the seating stays the same. Um, it's really just interior cosmetic improvements that would need to be made to accommodate the, the look and the feel of Smith &amp; Wolensky as opposed to Strega. So the reason we're here, I, I think, uh, obviously is that there was a condition in the original special permit, which is somewhat routine for the board to include about if there's any change of, of operator, um, then, you know, you would need to amend the permit. I think this is one of those borderline calls because technically it's the same company, it's just a different brand that they have. But nonetheless, under, uh, an abundance of caution, uh, working with staff, we, we did submit the, the amendment application, so. Uh, but again, there's no change to the site, parking is all the same, uh, we would comply with all the conditions from the original approval, it's really just the change of the name, so.
Great, thank you. Um, I mean, again, I think this is a pretty straightforward application. Uh, does anyone have any questions, concerns, whereas everything is remaining the same? Great.
One, just quick question.
Sure.
Because I, it's obviously right in line with what we've approved just a very short time ago, which was Del Frisco's same type of operation, but we also talked about the parking situation somewhat, right? There was more of a, you know, some of the cars were gonna be moved to other parts of the lawn or things like that. Is that all gonna be in place and still be down the same way?
Yeah, there, there's a, a, a condition in the decision which would remain that, uh, we would need to work with staff and the, and the chair on any, uh, valet parking arrangement if we're using that, that lot in the back, so, but, yeah.
Great. Uh, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that has any questions, comments, concerns?
I wanna ask the applicant of three, three locations in Massachusetts, why Burlington?
Why here?
We can.
How?
Is the applicant here?
Yep, they're online.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, if you could introduce yourself, please?
Unmute.
You're on mute.
Sorry about that. Uh, yes, hello, my name's Kim Dinsmore. I'm the executive vice president for PPX Hospitality. Um, and, you know, why do we want to be in Burlington? Uh, well, Legal Seafood's been around our, our umbrella, has been in Burlington for quite a few years. And it's, you know, it's been an amazing property that's done wonderfully for the brand. We're very excited about the renovation that we're doing there and to be able to get back open for the community. Um, and so, you know, we looked at the space and when we initially saw it, you know, we were, we really had it in our mind of expanding Strega. And just over the last six, eight months, really watching how our brands are developing, Smith &amp; Wolensky is, is, is really just on, um, a wonderful track. And knowing that the building was a steakhouse in the past and was quite successful while it was there, we just kind of felt it was, it was a much more natural fit to put Smith &amp; Wolensky in there and perhaps continue to search for a place for, for Strega.
Great.
Thank you. May I ask when Legal Seafood is going to reopen?
We eat, you know, construction has been, you know, our challenge is, I'm sure you hear that from a lot of people, you know, between getting materials and getting equipment. Um, I, it's in the mid-fall.
Great, thank you. And when do you anticipate this?
It, it will, will be with the construction constraints as well. We do have, you know, as, as he mentioned, we're not doing any significant changes or really any changes to the layouts that you've seen. It's really just securing new finishes. If it was green mar- white marble, it might be green marble instead, things like that. So we do have to secure that and same thing with construction. I would forecast sometime between late fall and, you know, a horrible worst case scenario could take us into December or January.
Right, great. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to, um, comment or has a question?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would further like to make a motion to approve the request of Strega Burlington LLC, the applicant, for a special permit pursuant to section three point seven, restaurants of the ninety Middlesex Turnpike Plan Development District zoning provisions to update the restaurant operator from Strega Burlington LLC to Strega Burlington LLC doing business as Smith &amp; Wolensky for property located in the ninety Middlesex Turnpike Plan Development District and Aquaford District at ninety-two Middlesex Turnpike, subject to the terms and conditions contained in exhibit B attached.
Next.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven zero. Welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items seven D, seven E, and seven F together for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna recuse for this matter on the back, yeah.
Don't go to that door.
Uh, item D is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point two point six point fourteen, establishments for contractors and such services a- as, but not limited to, building maintenance, plumbing, landscaping, electrical, masonry, carpentry, well drilling. Of the zoning bylaws, thirty Wind Street, Lexington Lawn Care is the applicant. Item E is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point three point two point six, outdoor storage of supplies and equipment incidental, uh, incidental to permitted uses, subject to requirements for location, lighting, screening, fencing, cover, and safety precautions. Of the zoning bylaws, thirty Wind Street, Lexington Lawn Care is the applicant. Item F is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point three point two point seven, off-street outdoor overnight parking of freight carrying and material handling vehicles and equipment or buses. Of the zoning bylaws, thirty Wind Street, Lexington Lawn Care is the applicant. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Uh, Thomas Murphy here for the applicant. Rob Bird is with me at the table. He's the principal of Lexington. This is our second time in, as the board might remember, this is a small parcel on Wind Street, thirty Wind Street, um, previous to the current use, it was a glass repair business. It's a small square footage, uh, area-wise, with one, uh, garage-type building on it. Uh, my client, uh, is a property management, uh, company, does his own exterior maintenance. And he just needed a little bit more room to put some of his equipment in his trucks. And that's his intention, uh, his proposed use for this, uh, space, is he'll have, uh, a couple of trucks there at night. His, um, his crew will drive there in the morning, leave their cars on site, um, take the trucks and go out to do their work, come back at the end of the day and, and switch back, so. Um, that's gonna essentially be, uh, the use that this, um, space is gonna be put to. When we were here last time, the board asked for a little bit more information onto the site plan, which we, uh, produced a week or two ago, uh, showing some of the site improvements that he's proposing. Um, admittedly, somewhat limited, but there really isn't a lot of space here to work with. Uh, but there is gonna be some, um, some vegetation along the right side of the building, some planters along, at the front side, on the right side of the parking lot, um, to try to bring some, um, color and some, and some plants in, into that area. Uh, he's lined it for parking spaces. There are three parking spaces parallel to the building on the left. Um, there's a garage door on the front left, uh, there's a parking space inside, obviously, uh, for the, uh, inside the garage door. And then outside the garage door, there's also space for another, uh, car to park, and to the right of that, there's gonna be a handicap space. Uh, the rear of the building is a very narrow, um, area between the back of the building and the, and the property line. The plan is to put a white, uh, vinyl six-foot fence along the property line in the rear that'll match up with the fence that's already there from, uh, from the abutters. Uh, but that'll help protect, um, sightlines for the neighbors out back and also keep, um, anything trash or whatever from blowing into the, into the back, the neighbors out back. And that primarily, Madam Chair, are the, are the additions to the plan since the last time we were here. I think it addresses. are the additions to the plan since the last time we were here. I think it addresses, at least to the best degree that we could, some of the requests and comments that the board had brought up at the time. But we're certainly willing to answer any questions or address any concerns the board still might have.
Great, thank you. As previously stated, I did send them all the forms and did review the last meeting. Do you have some comments from Conservation?
I think the main comment they had, they wanted to make sure that any, like, any equipment that is being refueled, or, you know, changing oil or anything happened inside the building for spill containment, because directly kind of behind and adjacent is a wetland area.
Yep.
And so I think we would probably try and condition that in there, just, you know, to keep everything clean.
Sure.
And that's, that condition's not a problem. We don't intend to do any of that on-site, but if we did, it would be inside.
Okay, and then staff, I might be blind today. Is that a different site plan than what we reviewed earlier?
Yes.
Yes.
So, we, there was a discussion about a temporary storage container in the rear during construction. And we had noted that if it's there during construction, we don't want to see it on the site plan. We don't want it there.
Correct.
If you're in the buffer, you need to have fireproof construction, fireproof walls, construction. So, you know, it was understood that it was for the building during the time of renovation, so it shouldn't be in forever on the site plan. So, yes, you were not seeing, so they've taken it off. It's not there. We're not approving a container in the back. The one question, I may have just touched upon it, and I apologize if you did and I didn't hear it. The three parking spaces along the side, during the day, I think you had mentioned, there are definitely going to be employees. In the evening, what will be parked in that space?
Potentially, one of the trucks, depending again on how many trucks are going to be on-site and how many can fit into the building. If there is, one of the special permits being requested is to pack trucks in the exterior. So it might be necessary to put one along the, along the left of the building there.
Okay. When you say it might be necessary, is that post-construction, or is that?
Yeah, that's permanently. It's a relatively small garage, and depending on how many trucks go back there on a given night, they might all get in the garage. But if not, we're going to have to park one outside. And that, that's where it would be, along the left side of the.
But they'll be along the side. They won't be toward the front of the site?
That's correct.
If that's the purpose.
It'd be parallel to the building. For years, the current owner actually ran a home heating oil business out of that site for a number of years, and he used to park it, that's where he used to park his truck.
Would it be possible, staff, for us to condition the number of vehicles that could be parked overnight and on weekends, so that it doesn't grow to be too many?
Yeah, in the parking, the three parking spaces provided.
Yep.
Or inside?
Yes, thank you.
You're right, that's a busy site.
It is, very tight.
One of those places where there's an expression for, which is not very nice, trying to put too much.
Oh. Is there anyone else that has any questions or comments?
Just a quick, I'll ask the question. Do you have another site in Burlington? Excuse me.
No, I don't. I have a site in Chelmsford, actually.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that has any questions, comments, concerns?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'd further like to make a motion to approve the request of Lexington Lawn Care, the applicant, for a special permit pursuant to Sections 4.2.6.14, Establishments for Contractors, and Section 4.3.2.6, Outdoor Storage of Supplies, and Section 4.3.2.7, Off-Street Outdoor Overnight Parking, of Article 4 of the Town of Burlington zoning bylaws, to permit the operation of a landscaping company for property located in the General Business District at 30 Wind Street, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit C as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome to Burlington, thank you.
I just want to offer my thanks and congratulations to Mr. Raymond for his many years of service. I had the pleasure of working with him in the Recreation Commission for a few years, so.
Well, thank you, yes.
Good luck, both.
Have a good evening, folks. Item G is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 1.5.2. Stop, can you just let you even come back in?
Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 1.5.2, Laboratories Engaged in Research, Experimental and Testing Activities Included, but not limited to, the fields of biology, chemistry, electronics, engineering, geology, medicine, and physics, subject to the planning board making the findings set forth in Section 8.3.7.4 of the zoning bylaws, and subject to the applicable rules and regulations of the Board of Health of the Northwest Park Plan Development District bylaw provisions. 63 Second Avenue, Lometier Vascular Inc. is the applicant.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board. How are you? Thanks for having us tonight. My name's Ed Walsh, I'm building services. Mark Pelletier from Mogul Stefano Architects.
Sure. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, I'm Mark Pelletier, I'm with Mogul Stefano Architects. We're here for the property at 63 Second Ave. We're seeking a special permit for modifications to the existing facility. The building is currently a 21,000-square-foot building that has a light manufacturing clean room with warehouse space inside. The existing clean room is 9,000 square feet, and we're seeking to increase the clean room space by 2,500 square feet. We'll be doing that by eliminating three labs and some office space, and then reworking some of the warehouse space to increase product flow. The plans don't include any plumbing or casework. We do have a gounding room that will have sinks, but that's really the only plumbing work to be done to the space. There's no change to the occupancy use or the occupancy count.
Staff, did you have any comments on this?
No, it's a fairly kind of straightforward limit. We've been hearing from Norblum, it is kind of going gangbusters. And so this is kind of an older site that has been part of Lometier forever, and this is kind of just codifying their lab space, so giving them the special permit that they need for it. And so it's as simple as that. I think down the road, you guys are going to come back for kind of site changes a little bit, I would guess. So get ready for that, that's upcoming. But this is just kind of codification of lab space, giving them the special permits they need so that they can do, they can construct.
Great. I don't have any objections or comments. Does anyone else on the board?
Whatever's going on inside, they're just reshuffling what's going on in there.
Right.
It seems, seems pretty easy.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Sure.
Thank you. So you're adding, you said 2,800 square feet of clean room space?
Within the existing footprint.
So it's 9,000 plus 2,800 for?
Yeah, roughly, yep.
And is, is that going to be the same level clean room space?
Yes.
Class?
It's an ISO 7. Well, it's not. Yeah, it's light manufacturing.
Light manufacturing, maybe a class?
ISO 8, ISO 7?
Seven.
They have different classes in that, yeah. So, class, they have different classes within that?
No, it's all ISOs.
Single class.
Single class.
Single class. Is it a microenvironment, or is it going to be, do you have to add additional HEPA filters or anything over top of the roof, or air handling for the additional clean room?
We'll be adding one additional rooftop unit to handle the additional volume.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions, comments, concerns?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'd further like to make a motion to approve the request of Lometier Vascular Incorporated, the applicant, for special permit pursuant to Section 1.5.2, Laboratories Engaged in Research of the Northwest Park Plan Development District bylaw provisions, to permit the operation of a laboratory within the building for property located in the Northwest Park Plan Development District and Water Resource District at 63 Second Avenue, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit D attached.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, folks.
Thank you.
You're all set. Thank you.
Item H is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 1.7.19, Storage of Oils and Fuels, Petroleum Products, Including Storage for On-Site Heating Purposes and Landscaping Maintenance Equipment in Excess of 50 Gallons of the Northwest Park Plan Development District bylaw provision, 51 North Avenue, American Tower LLC is the applicant. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the planning board. My name is Edward Paree. It's P-A-R-E. I'm an attorney of Brown Rudnick, One Financial Center in Boston, Massachusetts. I'm here representing American Tower. American Tower this evening is proposing to install a backup power generator, initially for T-Mobile's use. This is a wireless facility and compound that was approved back in 2001, so way back when. There are currently four co-locators at the site. T-Mobile's looking for backup power. We've sized the generator so that it can service other carriers in the area and at the compound. What we're proposing to do is to install a precast six-by-eight-foot cement pad adjacent to T-Mobile's installation, which you can see on the site plan there. It's in the area, which is bolded in black. So it's actually in between previously cleared areas, between the Verizon Shelter, which is on the left, and the T-Mobile equipment cabinets, which are on the right. So the generator will be installed on a pad. There'll be an H-frame placed with a shut-off switch and the connections to get to T-Mobile's equipment. Last Wednesday, we received the approval from the Conservation Commission, since the majority of the compound is within the 100-foot buffer zone. We're not planning to do anything with the wireless facility, nothing to the tower antennas. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sure. So Verizon has their own generator. This generator will service T-Mobile and AT&amp;T, so there's the fourth co-locator. Are they able to latch on, or do they have something proposed in the works?
They are, they can latch on. And we do expect that DISH, as a new entrance, entrant to the wireless market, may be coming before this board at some point, or to get their permits, but nothing yet. It will, it is capable of handling DISH and AT&amp;T, in addition to T-Mobile. But T-Mobile's the driver.
Right. I mean, I don't really have any objections to this. The only thing I will say, and I would like to put a condition into the approval, is that any equipment that is not being used at this point in time must be removed within 30 days of you installing this generator. Old wireless girl you're talking to.
I remember.
And, you know, former American Tower employee as well, so I'm quite familiar with the industry and still consults. So that is one thing that I'm pretty adamant about, that stuff has to go.
30 days of installation?
Yeah. Please. Is there anything else that folks would like to discuss?
Just a question on fencing is, and I don't, I can't, what are you planning to do with fencing, with, what's in the existing one, is there?
All of our work is being done inside the existing fence compound.
Existing one, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Quick question. So is this tower capable of more than two carriers, or?
Well, there are actually four carriers located there currently, but it is capable, the board approved this back in 2001, I think, for up to seven co-locators. The market has shrunk since 2001, but there are four currently, and as I mentioned, it takes time, but I expect DISH will attach to this soon.
There's four currently operating.
Correct.
Thank you.
So DISH would be five?
DISH would make five.
So who, so AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Verizon?
And Nextel's still there.
Nextel.
Yeah, if you want to, I can run through those. So in the top left-hand corner, it's AT&amp;T. Next to AT&amp;T, thank you, is Nextel. If we shift down to the south or lower, that's the, come down towards the bottom, that's the Verizon Shelter. If you go over to the right, that's T-Mobile Cabinets. The little, no, to the left of the pole is NextNav, they're a GPS company that attached to the top. And then, premature to say, but DISH will be next to the NextNav, as proposed, but that's somewhere down the road.
I was under the impression that Sprint had taken over Nextel, and now T-Mobile took over Sprint. So is that, what's, how does that affect what's going on?
They may consolidate at some point, but right now, they're still, you know, site by site, they still operate independently. Nextel was taken over by Sprint. That was a corporate merger. T-Mobile took over Sprint, but T-Mobile and Sprint both operated sites, at some sites, depending on their frequency and bandwidth.
Okay, thank you.
Just one more question. What's the, what's the amount of the removal bond that's on that property?
Yeah, it's good, I don't know.
You could let staff know and make sure that whatever the removal bond is, is adequate for a seven-carrier tower.
Sure.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that has any questions, comments, or concerns?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'd further like to make a motion to approve the request of American Tower, the applicant, for special permit pursuant to Section 1.7.19, Storage of Oils, Petroleum Products of the Northwest Park Plan Development District bylaw provisions, to permit the location of a diesel emergencies generator within the existing cellular equipment enclosure for property located in the Northwest Park Plan Development District and Water Resource District at 51 North Avenue, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit E attached, as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Have a good evening, thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take Items 7I through 7O together for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item I is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 6.1.2.1, Non-Conforming Structures and Premises of the Zoning Bylaws, One Burlington Mall Road, Pyramid Burlington Management LLC, on behalf of RV Hotel Burlington LLC is the applicant. Item J is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, One Burlington Mall Road, Pyramid Burlington Management LLC, on behalf of RV Hotel Burlington LLC is the applicant. Item K is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.4.2, Life Science Laboratories Engaged in the Manufacturing of Life Science Technologies and Medicines for Commercial Production to the Market, including but not limited to the fields of pharmaceuticals, biomedical technologies and engineering, life systems technologies, environmental biomedical devices, biosafety level four laboratories, as defined by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention or prohibited in Burlington of the zoning bylaws, One Burlington Mall Road, Lincoln Property Company is the applicant. Item L is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.9, Hazardous and Toxic Materials, Chemicals, Use, Storage, Transport, Disposal, or Discharge of the Zoning Bylaws, One Burlington Mall Road, Lincoln Property Company is the applicant. Item M is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.12, Generation or Storage of Hazardous Waste in Excess of the Volumes Classified as a Very Small Quantity Generator of the Zoning Bylaws, One Burlington Mall Road, Lincoln Property Company is the applicant. Item N is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.3.2.15, Storage and Disposal of Oils and Fuels, Petroleum Products of the Zoning Bylaws, One Burlington Mall Road, Lincoln Property Company is the applicant. Item O is an application for approval of a site plan, application for approval of a site plan, One Burlington Mall Road, Lincoln Property Group is the applicant. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Robert Buckley, Raymond Bronstein. I am with the cast of thousands. We'll introduce him, as Mr. Mark Wixton.
Mark Wixton with Boler.
Is the most important right now. Clearly, we're not here for a decision. We're awaiting the test pits from the site for the conservation, as well as this board, so that the storm warning can be verified, and that information, hopefully, we short, provide it to the board in short order. I'm here, just before I talk about the project, a number of people came up to me after the last hearing and asked me, is Lincoln putting up a spec building, or are they waiting for a user? And I think the board should understand that this is going to be constructed. They're going to put a spec building up, because they're of the belief that Burlington has become an epicenter for life science, and some of the major companies that have migrated from the greater Cambridge area, this is the type of building that they would be attracted to. And as new construction, it could be it could be tailored to satisfy and respond to those needs. So, just so that the board and the general public understands, this is not, this is not permit and banquet and wait. This is permit and hopefully build in short order. Tonight, I'd like to just give a couple, summary of three issues that we had a very, I thought, productive subcommittee meeting on that focused on these three issues. One is site circulation. The second was the appropriate screening for the building that there was a concern, or I want to say concern, there was a request for information as to what the screening would look like for the mechanicals. And the third is the mitigation that we're contemplating, which is going to be, I'll let Mark just show a picture of that in a while, but focus on the intersection of Mall Road with the site drive and trying to coordinate and upgrade that whole corridor with two, in terms of a technological upgrade, but also in doing so, be consistent with the overall beautification of Mall Road. With that, I'm going to step aside and let Paul Alf and my brother, brother in the profession take over because he represents Lincoln.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, Paul Alf, and I represent Lincoln Property. At the last meeting, the principal concern by the board was the rooftop penthouse, the screening around the penthouse, and there was a request to see if we could make the screen, a live screen with plantings on it. We contacted the HVAC engineers, and they advised us against doing that. Because of the significant capacity required, the HVAC units there, they wanted as much flow as possible, and they also did not want the possibility of plants and other materials getting into the equipment. To that end, we sent the architects back to the drawing board, and they put together some plans for an alternative type of screening that would be as attractive as possible, notwithstanding that from many perspectives, you won't be able to see the rooftop screen. They've put together some, some pictures of what it might look like, and Michael Liu should describe that because he'll do a much better job describing architecture than I shall.
Thank you, Paul. You're too modest. I'm Michael Liu. I'm the principal in charge of design at the architectural team. That was a pretty good summary by Paul. The screen around the mechanic equipment in life science buildings and in this one is a perforated screen because it has, the equipment inside has to breathe, but that doesn't mean that the screen itself can't have a pattern. It can't, we can custom design the screen and the perforations. The screens in general tend to be, for lack of a better word, sort of diaphanous. I mean, they're, you can, they're not completely opaque because they've got openings in them. If, we could take a quick look, and you can see that the screen on the, on the lower left, you can see its relationship to the, the equipment inside. You may recall also, we were using, we were trying to make the screen so that it's integrated with the design of the building and is part of the building form, and helps tie the, the other two pieces together. But when you look in the images on the right, you can get a sense, first in the top image, that you wouldn't be able to see light through the screen. It's not a solid screen. And then, in the lower images, you can see that we can, we can design various patterns within there. It doesn't have to be a uniform pattern, and, and that's also quite common. So we would, we would look forward to, as we advance the design, working with you to, to determine exactly what sort of pattern makes the most sense for this particular building, and would be the most interesting visually.
Thank you. Do you know of any buildings in the area that have any of these types of screenings that we could drive by and check it out? And if you don't right now, you can always get back to us.
Yeah, I think it'd be best if I come up with a survey of a few.
That'd be great. Thank you.
At the subcommittee meeting, we spent some time talking about the Mall Road beautification and also pedestrian access and the intersection. We, we focused a bit on what to do about the bus access and bus enclosures, and then spoke about the signalization at the intersection. Our traffic engineers reported to us that the current signals are sufficient for the purpose for which they are intended and for our proposed additional development. They contain their proper technology to be able to incorporate, well, they do incorporate adaptive signal control, and they, they would be sufficient for the, for the proposal. However, we're also aware that that's not the long-term goal of the town of Burlington, and the Burlington would like to have the beautiful yellow, old-school signal poles to be replaced by the more colonial-looking design that appeared in other parts of Mall Road. In that regard, Lincoln Property is very interested in cooperating with the town and doing something about that. We'll have continuing discussions regarding how we can incorporate that into a decision. We've raised the possibility that perhaps, as there are other developers that come up and down Mall Road, that maybe we could partner with one or the, or another, or the possibility of seeking some grant money so that we can make sure that there's sufficient funds in order to get the job done. We're also discussing the beautification of the median to make it consistent with what's been happening up and down Mall Road for some period of time and extend it down to this end. And that is an update of where we are. We look forward to coming back, but meanwhile, of course, we're here if you have any questions, and we can do our best to answer the questions and get back to you later with the answers.
Thank you. I think that summarized my understanding of everything from the subcommittee meeting this past week. Bob, was there anything else you wanted to add?
Just one thing for the benefit of the other board members. We did talk about patterns on the screening, and at that time, we did tell the applicant that the pattern should in no way be used as a sign.
Is there any?
I was just going to say that I've, I've really been impressed with the new lighting along the road, and I think that that road could, as we continue to do that, turn into a much more attractive area and much more towards what we want Burlington to look like and be like, rather than having so much of it look like, you know, a version of Route 95.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Is there any other board members?
Just one quick thing. I know at this subcommittee meeting, we talked about, you can do a cost analysis of the, that intersection, I don't, have you been?
We submitted the, that information to the staff.
Thank you.
Yeah, we do have it. We would like to, as suggested, we'd like to have a subcommittee meeting, another one before the next meeting. We did, we, although we've been talking about it, we just received it, so we're not prepared to talk about that piece tonight. I have one or two comments quickly, just since I'm speaking, but just one of the things we started talking about was obviously parking, making sure shared parking worked. Pedestrian connections all around the site and to Cambridge Street, from this site back to Burlington Woods Drive, and so it's, it's all there. They've connected everything, which I know we talk about a lot. And then, yeah, back to the signal, that's something that we want to make sure. And what we're looking for from the board is, I think, the intersection has a, although is working, there's a lot of older signals, there's some handicapped accessibility issues that exist just because it was built a long time ago, that we want to try to address through this process. So that, and then, we're waiting on some test pit data to make sure all the stormwater and environmental, any environmental improvements will work out. So that's why we don't have a decision specifically, is we'll, we have to work on some mitigation discussion, but also test, we just don't know what test pits in yet. As you guys know, there's the mountain of ledge in the middle, so we're really curious what's underground. So that, anyway, so that, that's where we are. We do have some information, but we do need, I would like to have a subcommittee so we could just kind of get a little bit more into the nitty-gritty. And the last question I have is, I know, I knew the height of the building, but the height of the building plus the screening, I just wanted to clarify for the board.
You know that now, Mark, don't you?
I believe the building is 64 feet, and the screening would be approximately 26 feet. The screening's kind of dependent upon the final selection of equipment.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. Yep, no, that's permitted.
Do you have any other? Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a couple items. One, when I thought about this after you came here, for me, I think, main concern is the pedestrian activity between the hotel parking lot and coming into the Marriott, and now with, you're going to have, I would say, non-Marriott-type traffic coming into that bottom building, so now that it's kind of now acting as a, as a street. Having been in that parking lot and crossing over there, even when it's, you know, people are looking for spots and it's basically a hotel, it's, it's fairly dangerous. So now, I'm looking, maybe, I thought, what would work? Would it be pedestrian signs that are blank to say, this is the crossing that goes from the parking lot to the Marriott? Or speed bumps, which I don't like either one of them, but what I found to be effective in other places, I think, member, member has proposed in cases, is a, is a speed table. Right there coming in, right, just one speed table right from the Marriott parking lot where people are going directly in and heading into the entrance. I think that would really calm the traffic with people coming in and getting, trying to get to work on time and on the way out as well. So maybe some other thoughts from the planning members on that. The second thing I had was, I was coming home from work today, and I heard something on Speedi, Heat Islands. So, you know, it's, it's a parking lot before, and now it's going to be a building, and, you know, they're talking about kind of, you know, urban developments where there's not a lot of trees around, and I know there's some comments on adding some trees and things like that to buffer at least the, the pure heat generation from days like this. So I think it was, it was perfect timing on that one. And the third one, not necessarily to the applicant here, maybe we could talk about it during our strategy meeting. I think I saw something that somebody had talked about putting banners back up on the Mall Road. Did anybody see that anywhere?
I did see that, and it was, the select board had discussed putting, I guess, seasonal banners or something along those lines.
Right, right. So if anybody's been here a while remembers the last time that banners tried to get up on the Mall Road, so that was, didn't end well, so maybe we can?
It did not end well?
No.
Oh, no.
Well, we can talk about it later. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the board that has?
I'm just wondering, Bill.
Yeah.
Speed table, could that, could that be a combination crosswalk speed table?
Yeah, sure. Great idea. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's the same thing we have over where we did the Burlington Auto, Sears Auto.
At Nordstrom, they have that, too.
Right, it's real effective.
Right.
Right, Nordstrom's doing that.
Like in a paving block or some sort of?
Where do they have that?
So if you, over near, kind of going from the parking lot, Shake Shack, over to Cafe Nero.
Oh, okay.
Over that way, and Sweet Greens and things like that, and then over, said Nordstrom's, they got the speed table there, too. It's really great.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it's very effective.
Okay. So, Bill, all great comments. We'll bring that to the subcommittee, where we are reading for test pits, and we are meeting again.
Madam Chair, can I give a quick response to Mr. Gaffney's comments? We have, we spent a lot of time at the subcommittee talking about pedestrian connections in, in front of the hotel. There are some major improvements that are going to be done there in terms of signage and some of those blinking, because they're all solar activated now, so you can put them out, they, oops, excuse me, they can be moved, and, but it's important to note, it's a very interesting fact, that there's probably more traffic going by that site entrance today than will when this is done because the lower lot is being used as a parking lot for?
For the, for the thing that was approved.
Yeah, so there's a lot more, but the final comment is, the vegetation down on Cambridge Street is staying the same, and, you know, so there'll be that thick vegetation, so that will act as a natural buffer. And actually, from your Heat Island comment, there's actually a reduction in impervious surface here when this is done. And on the height issue, I know that that might have been an issue, brought a perspective that the building, when done, will actually sit below the Marriott, so I'll, I'll leave this for the board, so you'll see that from my street presentation, it'll actually be this.
Great.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue these matters to the planning board meeting of August 18th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take item 7P through 7V together for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
As the, as the chair is reading, I did start sending some special permits down.
We've been signing them.
Item P is a public hearing application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.7.4. Laboratories engaged in research, experimental and testing activities, including but not limited to the fields of chemistry, electronics, engineering, geology, non-biological medicines and physics of the zoning bylaws, Three Burlington Woods Drive, G.I.E.T.S., Burlington LLC is the applicant. Item Q is a public hearing application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.7.4.1. Life science laboratories engaged in research, prototype manufacturing, experimental and testing activities, including but not limited to the fields of pharmaceuticals, biomedical technologies and engineering, life systems, technologies, environmental and biomedical devices, biosafety level four laboratories as defined by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention are prohibited in Burlington, the zoning bylaws, 13 Burlington Woods Drive, G.I.E.T.S., Burlington LLC. Item R is a public hearing application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.7.4.2. Life science laboratories engaged in the manufacture of life science, technologies and medicines for commercial production to the market, including but not limited to the fields of pharmaceuticals, biomedical technologies and engineering, life systems, technologies, environmental biomedical devices, biosafety level four laboratories as defined by the CDC, and prevention are prohibited in Burlington, the zoning bylaws, Three Burlington Woods, G.I.E.T.S., Burlington LLC is the applicant. Item S is a public hearing application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.7.9. Hazardous and toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal, or discharge of the zoning bylaws, Three Burlington Woods, G.I.E.T.S., Burlington LLC is the applicant. Item T is a public hearing application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.7.12. Generation or storage of hazardous waste in excess of the volumes classified as a very small quantity generator of the zoning bylaws, Three Burlington Woods Drive, G.I.E.T.S., Burlington LLC is the applicant. Item U is a public hearing application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 6.1.2.1. Non-conforming structures and premises of the zoning bylaws, Three Burlington Woods, G.I.E.T.S., Burlington LLC is the applicant. Item V is a public hearing application for approval of a site plan, Three Burlington Woods, G.I.E.T.S., Burlington LLC is the applicant.
Could you say that again? I didn't hear that.
That was impressive, yes.
Chasing bees, Micro Machine Reading, I mean, all the entertainment in One Burlington Planning Board meeting. How are you this evening?
Well, good evening again, Madam Chair. Attorney Mark Bond with the, with Reiman Bronstein representing the applicant, G.I. Partners. With me tonight, Mark Wixted with Bowler, who's also civil engineer for this project, and a few other folks that are here that we introduced at the last meeting, but Joe Imperato, who is with G.I. Partners, the property owner, Greg Luskey, who's with Leggett McCall, the project manager, and also Michael Manship, who is architect with Vivo Architecture. So we, at your prior meeting, gave a pretty detailed presentation in terms of what the project is, but in short, we had a very brief PowerPoint, if we could just, or slide deck, if we could just walk through it quickly here, I thought it might be helpful, but as?
Do you want to share?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Good, awesome.
So, and again, just to remind the board, so this is not a, a new building, this is the existing building at Three Burlington Woods, which our client is looking to be able to reposition for lab and office combination, and it's an existing building that's been there, was built back in the, the early 80s, from what I understand, and has been operated since that time. So, you, I'm still trying to get up, okay. There we go. So that's, again, just a rendering of the existing building, that's looking at it from the parking field on the 128 side of the building, but it's been there, as I said, since the early 1980s. It was approved, and, you know, some attractive, handsome office building that my client purchased earlier this year, and very excited about the opportunity to reposition it for lab and life science use, consistent with what the, the board's efforts have been in that regard over the past several years. So, so again, I introduced the project team already, who's here. What we're here to just update you on, and I, I want to thank Liz and Kristin, we had an opportunity since the last meeting to go out, look at the site, along with Conservation Commission staff, to make a few modifications to the site. Commission staff, to make a few modifications to the site that I think had been asked for, including providing a pedestrian sidewalk connection that would allow for employees and visitors to the site to be able to safely walk out and get across to the sidewalk system, as well as providing additional landscape islands as well, which I think is apropos of the Heat Island comment that had come up, that I think you'll see that we've added a significant number of new landscape islands now, when you look at the totality of it, and addressing some of the Conservation Commission comments. But again, very briefly again, so again, it's converting an office building to a mixture of office and lab, very slight increase in square footage, the building footprint is not changing, but this is that building, if you recall, that has structured parking at the first level. So we're going to be actually filling in some of that parking to provide some of those control areas and whatnot, as opposed to having to do that, you know, outside of the building. And then there's some infill space as well within the building mezzanine. So this is, again, just the orientation of the site, and I'm not trying to speed date through this, but I want to be respectful of your time.
I appreciate that.
And you've heard all this before, but this is the site orientation, again, that's the building, you see 128 running left to right in yellow there at the, at the bottom. So, and this gives you a sense of the areas that we've made some changes. Again, we met out at the site with Kristin, Liz, along with Eileen Coleman from Conservation to review some of these changes, but we're providing a new pedestrian sidewalk connection from that front, which is the area that's kind of in that large rectangle up at the top. We're providing a concrete sidewalk that would go down to Burlington Woods Drive, and we'll show a magnified version of that in a minute, that provides a crosswalk to the sidewalk system that presently exists on the other side of Burlington Woods Drive. And then, in addition, you can see, in the, I wish I had a pointer, but we had previously added those green landscape islands that are outside of that box, but in addition, we have added three additional substantive landscape islands within the parking lot, which the intention would be to have shade trees and things of that nature to, you know, be able to address the comments that had come up as part of the staff review. So be a pretty, you know, significant increase in terms of landscape islands and green space that's out there. So this is a zoomed-in view of the new sidewalk that would be constructed at the entrance of the building. And again, there's a sidewalk that's on the other side of Burlington Woods Drive, so this would be able to connect to that by way of a crosswalk. And I'm not trying to steal any of your thunder, so if you want to chime in and...
You're doing fine.
All right. So, and again, there are some grade complexities with the site, if you've driven by there. So we, we're comfortable that we'll be able to do this in a manner that complies with accessibility requirements. So, and next slide, this is just a more magnified zoom-in, if you would, of the areas where we're providing the additional landscape islands, where we would provide vegetation within those as well. So, and I think that speaks to a comment that I know Member Gaffney had raised before as part of another discussion. But, and then there were conservation comments that had been submitted, we feel like we've addressed those. I don't know if we need to go through these individually, but I think they, they speak for themselves, that we have actually added another storm scepter as well, to be able to address pretreatment of runoff. And I believe that Conservation Commission has indicated their consent. So with that, very anxious to be able to, I know, speaking for Joe and his team, I know they're very anxious to be able to invest significantly in this building in a manner that, you know, they feel that the town will ultimately be very proud of in terms of, as my partner, Bob Buckley, had mentioned before, I know Burlington has really worked hard to try to, you know, grow the sector, and it's certainly resonating in the marketplace, and they're very excited to be, be a part of it. So with that, happy to answer any questions or address any comments, but we were hopeful for a favorable disposition of this, so that we could move forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Staff, did you want to make any comments?
Sure. So as we've talked about even tonight, just kind of the need to make sure for every site that we're doing a couple things, we're making sure we're adding mobility options from the site to the area roadways, which they have added in the front of the site. Also, to look at, especially for these older sites, to improve the environmental, just improve the site environmentally. They are doing modifications over in the loading dock area, they're also adding a storm scepter 900 to the main area. So if you look at the site, you have the site, and then to the, to the left of the screen is this, it says wetlands, but it's really a big drainage, big drainage basin. There's the ducks that live there, they're, it's a well, well-grown-out site. But anyway, just to make sure that the stormwater from those, from the parking lot can be pretreated, some conversations with, and Conservation, just looking at this site, especially with the reuse of the site, the planning board does need to make a finding, a section six finding for the parking. The site is, they are reducing parking, but the parking, the site is still overparked. And just, is, you know, is there additional ways that we could look at, potentially additional green space, is one of the questions that we had. But we're very pleased that they looked to add pedestrian accessibility to the site. We do want to look at if there's need for signage just around the bend, as Attorney Vaughn said, there is some site distance questions, so we just want to make sure that that's, that's addressed. And then there's a whole bunch of conditions in here that it's, a lot of kind of administrative update of the zoning block table, just kind of clarify some information. Burlington Woods is a mix of easements and partially subdivision way, and just making sure it's really clear what's, what's in and around the site and where frontage is, et cetera. So that's, that's what I have.
Thank you. Attorney Vaughn, and I'm sorry, Attorney Buckley isn't here to ask me this question, but have you or your client thought about any contributions to beautification of Burlington Mall Road and the intersection?
We, we haven't, to be honest with you. I mean, the site is not on Mall Road, I mean, it's a fair distance away, I mean, it, butts 128, but it's not, it's an existing building that's there, so I think we're just trying to be conscious of what we're, what we're doing in relationship to that, so, but...
What's the address of the building?
3 Burlington Woods Drive. It's the color kinetics building, the Phillips Color Kinetics building?
Yeah, I know, I was just wondering whether it was Mall Road or, you know, to me, it's absolutely 25, but...
Right, right.
Yeah, it's huge.
Do any of my board members have any questions, comments, concerns? No? This is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that has any questions, comments or concerns? See no one? Okay.
Just a quick, staff seems to think that the site might be overparked according to the zoning bylaws, so we have to make a section six finding. Is there any thought about reducing the parking, having some in reserve, blah, 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 any of that stuff?
Yeah, so I appreciate the comment, Ernie. So, you know, we are reducing the parking by 81 spaces, so we're...
So the spaces under the building?
It's a portion under, but there's 51, I think it's 29 spaces under the building, and then like 52 spaces in the, in the, in the lot itself, the surface lot. So we are, you know, making a significant decrease in the parking, and I, I think it's really also that, you know, we're anticipating a lab-office split that, you know, might, depending upon the type of tenant in there, you know, there could be a little bit more office. So we're just trying to reflect the fact that the, the mix between lab and office, you know, could increase over time too, with, with more office. So I, I think it's, it's a significant reduction in parking from what's out there today. So I guess, you know, we feel like we're, you know, between that and, and the, the other upgrades, we've certainly made a significant net improvement, so.
One quick question for staff. Sure. Is it in the conditions that those trees will be shade trees? I'm going to make sure it is. Yes. Thank you. This is a public hearing, is there any, in the audience, has any questions, comments, concerns? Not seeing anything online, Madam Chair. Thank you. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on these matters.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven, zero? Yes. I would further like to make a motion to approve the request of G.I.E.T.S. Burlington LLC, the applicant, for a special permit pursuant to sections 4.2.7.4. Laboratories engaged in research, 4.2.7.4.1. Life science laboratories engaged in research, 4.2.7.4.2. Life science laboratories engaged in the manufacture of the following, 4.2.7.9. Hazardous and toxic materials, 4.2.7.12. Generation or storage of hazardous waste, 6.1.2.1. Non-conforming structures and premises of Article 4 of the Town of Burlington zoning bylaw, to allow for the conversion of an existing office space into life sciences building for property located in the general industrial zoning district at 3 Burlington Woods Drive, subject to the terms and conditions contained in exhibit eight, excuse me, exhibit F attached. As amended or...
Much.
As attached, okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would further like to make a motion to approve the request for approval of a site plan application of G.I.E.T.S. Burlington LLC, property owner, for property located at 3 Burlington Woods Drive, the premises, to convert the existing office building for life science use, including enclosing a portion of underbuilding parking, construction of loading docks and additional site improvements, as reflected on a plan entitled G.I. Partners' Proposed Building Conversion, parcel 41985, at 3 Burlington Woods Drive, Town of Burlington, Middlesex County, Massachusetts, site plan, prepared by Bowler, dated April 3rd, 2022, revised to July 15th, 2022, consisting of four sheets, subject to the following revisions, terms and conditions, as printed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Have a good evening, folks, thank you.
Thank you.
Ten seconds. I, I also want to acknowledge and thank Paul Raymond for his years of service to the town. Paul, it's been a pleasure appearing before you. I started appearing before, I think it was 1995, you were on the board then, you were probably already here for 20 years, but I respect and admire your commitment to the town, and I wish you nothing but great health and...
Well, thank you very much, and I send that back to you, because your firm has always been very straightforward with us and very professional, and I always felt confident that you were here well-prepared and had dotted all the Ts and so forth.
Always a couple of exceptions along the way, but I appreciate that, thank you.
I accept your humble...
Thank you. Thank you. You're starting on 21 and then jumping to 23.
I know, it's pretty amazing, it's only 9 o'clock.
What?
Shh, don't judge.
I'm on it. I have a motion, please. Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take item 7W and 7X together for discussion purposes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item W is a continued public hearing application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.7.1. Light manufacturing or processing plants, prototype manufacturing, the zoning bylaws, 22 Terry Ave, Terry LLC is the applicant. Item X is a continued public hearing application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.7.1.1. Research and development in the zoning bylaws, 22 Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Good evening, folks. You thought you were...
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, Christine Hung, Reemer Bronstein. With me tonight, I have Kevin McCall, CEO of Paradigm Properties. Just to give a recap, it's been a little bit before we were, before you, this is our third time before you. Paradigm Properties recently purchased 22 Terry Ave, and when we were first here, we were seeking seven special permits, and at that first hearing, we listened and heard the abutters and concerns of some of the board members of not having a tenant in hand and using these, some of these like chemicals and hazardous materials, and that also being so close to the residential neighborhood. So we under, we understood those concerns, and as a result, we decided to continue the five, and you'll see on this slide right here, that we are continuing the bottom five special permits, and then moving forward with research and development and light manufacturing. Additionally, you know, we feel confident in continuing these five special permits, because the type of tenant that they're looking to market are intelligent R&amp;D-type tenants, which are like robotics and A&amp;I-type tenants. And so we feel that, you know, the R&amp;D and the light manufacturing will cover those uses, but at the same time, the mark, the way that the market is, is that we don't want to foreclose that, so they are actively marketing the property, and if there is a tenant that comes, we'll be back before you, and then explaining the operations and the chemicals that they'll be using. Other questions that came about from the board and from planning staff were some of like the improvements to the property enhancements in terms of the aesthetics. There's no exterior modifications that are being proposed at the property, but the applicant would like to do enhancements to the property. And so what we have here on this slide is a list of all of the proposed improvements that they have either completed or, or willing to complete. So some of those are, they've removed the chain link fence at the front entranceway, they've replaced the roof, replacing certain windows, the loading dock, one of the comments was that the loading dock area to stick, create more of like a natural view and, and so that doesn't stick out so much, so that we would paint the loading dock, so that would better match the facade and reduce the visual impact, and then various plantings. And I'm actually going to turn it over to Kevin McCall right now, and he can walk you through the rest of the slides with respect to the landscape design.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you. Let me just run you through some of the things we're in the midst of doing. This is a photograph of the building in the before condition, and I think one of the comments at a prior meeting was a question as to where the front entrance is. Well, it's, it's hidden by all that landscape material, so that, that is going to disappear and be replaced. Let me, and this is the next bunch of slides are renderings, some of this plant material's already in, we're putting new maple trees, we've taken out the majority of that obscuring landscape material that was growing up over the windows and obscuring the, the visual access to the front of the, of the building. We can go to the next slide. This is the loading dock, and as Kristin mentioned, there was a comment made in an earlier meeting about whether or not we could paint this, the tile surround of the loading dock doors, so that it more closely matched the rest of the building facade, happy to do that. You can also see that the plan calls for arborvitae green giants to obscure the, the view of the loading docks when you're coming down Terry Ave. The tree on the right is another one of those maples that has been planted. Some more slides, this is, again, that view of the loading dock. This is around the other side of the building, a view from Long Street, with just some of the plant material that we're putting in. Those trees that you see, that row of maple trees is new plant material. And again, this is, view of the front entrance of, of the building with new trees and new This is around to the backside of the building, where we're planting the, these new spruce trees, as well as another maple. We might go back, if we can go back three or four slides, I want to show, because there was a, there, there's been some discussion at prior meetings, let's go back to a slide of the front entry. That's, that one's probably okay. There was a question as to whether or not we could, yeah, this is a better slide, if we could add a walk down to the, down to Terry Ave from the front entrance. If we could add a walk down to Terry Ave from the front entrance. And this rendering begins to show you the concern that we have about doing that because of the grade. It'd be tough to get, you know, to make it ADA compliant. So there have been discussions, the staff has suggested, and if we go to that slide, sort of the aerial view. Staff has suggested that we, maybe I can hit it with my. Yeah. Right there, where the cursor is, staff has suggested extending the sidewalk down to Long Street. And across Long Street, NBM is putting in a new sidewalk. I will say that I'm not particularly enthusiastic about that, only because I don't think human nature will have people going in the wrong direction to where they, from where they want to go. But we're certainly willing to make that concession on this if the board would like us to. The idea is that the sidewalk, there would be a new sidewalk from where the cursor is, down to Long Street, and then across Long Street to where NBM is putting in their sidewalk.
So just to clarify.
That would attach around to the other side of Terry Ave.
Sorry, I kept trying to find the pause. Just to clarify, that we were suggesting, and really, as we've talked about in the last couple of projects, you know, ensure there is a way to get ADA accessible from the doorways to the roadways. So I leave that up to the applicant to figure out. I didn't, we didn't dictate where it should exactly be, but that it is a requirement that they look to include that, so. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, I was trying, again, trying to find the pause.
Thank you, Kristin. So we feel like we've addressed many of the questions that were, all of the questions that were raised by butters in the board, and so hopefully we'll get a favorable decision tonight. But we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Does, do any of my fellow board members have any questions, comments, please?
I just, but regarding the ADA compliant walkway, is this something that we can put in there that they'll work out with staff? Is that comfortable?
Yeah, we're agreeable to that condition as well, so.
Thank you, that's all I have. Joe?
So, do we have the, so we have, that's the overlay, so we're dealing with lighting and, you know, along, I guess, what the walkway would be and along the property line as well. That being proposed to.
You know, we have on the.
Along Long Street up to.
Down to Long Street into the neighborhood, you know, through the overlay, as we did with Northern, you know, we asked them to put in lighting and the walkways.
What is this, storage? So do you, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I'm understanding you. Are you asking for a sidewalk on this side?
Well, lanterns, the sidewalk is going to go down and then it's going to cross where the other sidewalk picks up, but lanterns along the property line, all the way to the neighborhoods.
Okay.
Which, because this falls within the overlay, we've done it with the storage facility, everything that's come before us, we did it with Northern Business. This one, we have the opportunity now to address the lanterns, as well as the fence. So I know we talked about, we talked about the fence and that chain link, right? And that's going to be removed, so.
We took the gates at the front entrance on both sides of the building out. We've left the chain link fence at this point.
I think it's probably for security for the tenants. They might want something that's enclosed, enclosing their lot rather than removing it and having the parking lot open to the street.
Sure. I mean, I, I mean, like a wrought iron would be beautiful, that's what they did over at the storage facility. And I think that's the consistency we're going to look for down in that area. Chain link is not allowed within the overlay. So I think, I would be perfectly fine with a fence if they need, a fence to enclose their property, but I think it's going to have to be a different kind of fence than the chain link.
So are you saying, so it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, in the rear of the property is the chain link behind the spruce trees, correct?
Yeah.
So the.
So I would be okay if the chain link was in the back, but I like the idea of the wrought iron in the front.
Right, so along the property line with the neighbor, I guess, that's fine, if that's what you mean. Along Long Street and Terry should be.
What we're looking at.
It's shown right here, I could totally, you know, support wrought iron right there. I mean, it's around the whole property, we have the chain link in the back and then the wrought iron in the front.
Yeah, like along the street line.
Yeah.
Just so along Terry Ave and Paul, I mean, I'm sorry, Long Street. And then once you hit the back of the property where the abutment home is, you know, that's, I guess, if that's the fence that's being referred to here, that's probably fine, right, because that's not even visible from the street. As long as the neighbors are fine with that and, you know, because again, you know, we've got, you know, with the overlay, there's new sets of buffer requirements and all of that that go along with it, so. But I, I mean, my understanding is the neighbor is happy with the fence being there, is that correct? You know, we actually have one of the neighbors here, so I don't know.
Well, one's got the reference and then.
Yeah. No, so my understanding is that that neighbor is probably fine with that fence there, but I'm actually talking about all the streetscape, everywhere that you.
Much like so.
Streetscape, so.
So is that, if there is a fence you want it, because they were saying they might, they don't want to take it out, is that?
Yeah, they want a fence to enclose their property, just let's just require the same fencing we required over the storage facility that we required, you know, within the overlay, because the chain link is not, is not currently allowed.
Yeah, and it looks really nice, so it would look nice here, too.
Yeah, and that's, and I would, you know, that would be fine if they wanted it enclosed, that's fine, but chain link is not one of the fencing materials that's allowed in the overlay company, so.
And lanterns, too, outside the fence.
And lantern, and the street lanterns, you know, as we did with Northern, and they weren't happy, but, and the storage facility, which they were more than happy to do.
No, on Long Street. I think, you know, they have those sticks with a little flag on them that they're forever, and I almost think that the property owners is, yes, I know I have to put a sidewalk here sometime. And I'm just putting those sticks there to let you know that I know, but God knows what it's going to get.
And those sticks are probably rotten.
I'm getting older myself, and some of these things, I say, no, hurry up and do it or I'll never see it.
Right. Anyway, that, those are my comments, Madam Chair.
So, just for clarification, are you saying that the fence along Long Street all to be replaced from chain link to?
Like wrought iron?
Yeah, all the fencing along the street, whether it be Terry Ave along would be.
There's no fencing along Terry Ave, I think it's just along Long Street.
They don't, I mean, if they don't want fencing, that's fine, we're not requiring fencing, but if there's got to be fencing, it needs to comply with the overlay.
I see, okay, so it's either fencing, or if that's okay, or like maybe another option is if they take down the fencing and then maybe put in landscaping, I guess, would that be an acceptable other option?
That's fine, that would be fine as well, that's allowed within the overlay.
I think we'd probably do the fencing option and I'd ask the board to let us work out the detail of the fence with the staff. Would that be okay?
Sure.
Okay.
And the lanterns as well.
And the lanterns.
So the lanterns, where would the lanterns, and are lanterns along Long Street right now that?
There's, there are in Terry Ave, in Northern Business Machines. We looked at the amount of frontage, Northern Business Machines is putting in one and where the self-storage is, they have a spacing, I don't remember.
So everything that happens with the overlay now, all the streetscape is required to have lanterns, so, you know, when I say streetlights, but in a colonial-looking lantern.
Just like the ones outside the storage facility, you can look, see them, you drive by.
Can you pull that up so they can see?
Actually, yes.
And how many are you looking for over there?
Yeah, how many?
Well, what's the separation of the spacing? How are they spaced in front of the storage facility?
I think we would just say like for like.
Same as the storage facility or anywhere else, right?
Spacing for what?
Same spacing, so it looks consistent.
Primarily, since there is kind of a neighborhood, there's a house and so forth, to keep the kids and so forth from being able to go across into the back of that industrial area and so forth, because they love spots like that where the adults can see them and so forth.
I think the one between the house and the back, yeah. Yeah, the one, I think the one I'm talking, but the chain link between the house and the back, in the back of this facility, should be fine. I'm just talking really along the street. So if they, you know, again, I'm not requiring fencing, but if they would like it, it just needs to comply, so.
So one question I have regarding the lighting is that where is it usually placed? Like on the right of way or on the property, on the property?
It's usually placed right at the front of the property and right, kind of on the line, but on the property side. Can we pull up? But it is mixed. That the storage facility at the beginning of Terry Ave, just to show what we mean?
I can punch, but I can get you.
On chemistry as well.
Or we just make it consistent with what the other ones are, right?
We're just trying to, trying to connect all the areas together with.
So I mean, the best way to do it now is that is keep it all consistent.
Can I ask, back to the fence? If they had, if they proposed a wood-type fence or a vinyl-type fence, is it strictly just that wrought iron look or just, or options? If you're going to give it to us, I want to make sure.
I would, my preference would be wrought iron as we required over the storage or if they want planting, then do planting.
Yeah, I mean, it's wrought iron.
Yes, probably aluminum.
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, it's probably not wrought, it's probably aluminum.
Powder-coated aluminum is probably what you're thinking.
Yes, wrought iron.
Wrought iron, right.
Wrought iron looking?
Yeah, so if you see, these are on the property right behind the, right behind the sidewalk.
Yeah, you see the, see the lighting and the, and if you go a little further down, you'll see the wrought iron that was in the, in the. Yeah, the lighting's.
I like the lighting a lot.
This is an old view, Joe, sorry, it's from twenty nineteen.
Oh, he's going down that road a little.
Is the bowling alley still there?
I wish, I wish, I wish we still had bowling alley.
No, it's just the building, oh, there's this.
But there's the lighting now.
There's the gate.
It's the worst, like you brought it about bowling alley.
It's the light.
That's bowling alley, right?
It was.
So it's behind the side, the lighting is sort of just in, behind the sidewalk.
Right. Right. And they have beautiful, the gates, you know, the gates are beautiful. They have gates going in and it's all wrought iron gates going into the storage facility, so that's the type of look where, you know.
Could you all help me a little bit on the, on the light posts? I don't quite understand what you're asking for. We don't have a sidewalk on our side of the street.
Yeah, that's okay, I mean, it's, there are, you know, there are lights on all streets, actually. There are streetlights on all streets and nobody, and my street doesn't have a sidewalk on the side that they have streetlights on. We have, ours have antique, same kind of antique lighting going down our street and only one side has a sidewalk, but the lighting is actually on both sides of the street, so the other part of it goes in the, you know, in the grass, so it's just lighting the street, basically, so.
Yeah, on Terry Ave or on Terry End Long?
Well, I'm sorry, was it?
On Terry or Terry End Long?
We, right around the corner until you hit the residential properties down there, right? Just to define the overlay, which is.
And they're doing that across the street at MDM, right?
Yes.
Northern Business.
It's a little match.
So is it, so I guess we can work with planning staff to figure out locations and.
Yes, absolutely, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's.
And we have the cut sheet of the light that MDM is, M, yeah, MDM.
So the, so across the street where Northern Business is being, is there light posts along Long Street on that side of the street?
So they're going to have light posts down there, but they're also doing a sidewalk. If you want to put a sidewalk that hallway, we'd be fine with that.
They're putting a light at the intersection.
Is there anyone else in the staff and the board that has anything that they would like to add? Nope, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to, yeah, if you would please come up? Folks, if you would, wouldn't mind providing the microphone, thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy O'Neill, thirty-one October day. So I have seen them working down there and they really are doing a nice job, so thank you for that. I think the concern I have is number one, when they talked about security, I've seen a lot of buildings in Burlington that don't have fences and where the front is open, I don't really know how much security it's going to offer anyway, but certainly the wrought iron is a much better option than what's already there, so that's good. But I think my question is, it's wonderful they're making all of the improvements to the outside of the building and it needed to be done, so that's great. But I'm concerned still about what's going to be going on inside the building. I don't want to say, you know, we're all happy about the improvements on the outside and overlook the most important thing, which is the chemicals and disposal of waste and so forth that's going on in the inside. So I haven't heard any clarification. I think that they mentioned that they're moving towards intelligence or something like that. I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with all of those terms. But they did say they want to leave it open in case because of the market and I just would like clarification on that and what the board's position is. We don't have to give them, or you guys don't have, the Town of Burlington or the board doesn't have to give them special permits. So if there are going to be chemicals, I don't think anybody here would want them that close to their house. There were literally, I don't know, probably five houses whose backyard, at least three, maybe five, that touch that property. So it's a real concern, this isn't the other side of town, this is a neighborhood. This is the overlay district and I think that we should put a lot of emphasis, great that all of this exterior is being improved upon, but Burlington already has some issues with the water and I don't think that we want to add to that problem particularly as close to our neighborhood as it is. So I just would like clarification and I'd like to know the position of the board.
Sure, so, were you watching the beginning of the meeting?
I'm sorry, but.
Did you watch the beginning of the meeting?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so in the beginning of the meeting, we postponed several of the special permits so that the only use that can be in here right now is research and development.
Okay.
And furthermore, once, and correct me if I'm wrong, once we do have a tenant, they will be coming back to us regardless of its research and development or if it's, you know, another, another type of user. So, you know, I think that those concerns, if there are any, depending on who the tenant is, will be addressed at that time.
Excellent, okay, thank you for the clarification, I appreciate it. And thanks to everybody for really considering and understanding how important the aesthetics are in that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the board?
Madam Chair, if I could, I just want to add for Ms. O'Neill's benefit that we have been in front of the Board of Health and we've committed to the Board of Health that we would do the same. We'd come back before them when we have a tenant in place.
Awesome, thank you.
A tenant in, a prospect.
That's great, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anyone else in the audience that are online, I should say, that has any questions, comments, or concerns? Not seeing anyone online, Madam Chair.
Okay, may I have a motion, please? Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the request of A.P. Terry. Do we have?
Okay.
Oh, sorry. All right, first we will, I make a motion to close the public hearing on these matters.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now I would like to make a motion to approve the request of A.P. Terry LLC, the applicant, for special permit pursuant to sections four point two point seven point one, light manufacturing or processing plants, prototype manufacturing, and section four point two point seven point one point one, research and development of Article Four of the Town of Burlington zoning bylaw to allow for the conversion of an existing office space into an R and D building for property located in the general business and central business district at twenty-two Terry Avenue, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit G as amended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
You, too.
Okay, folks, that completes a better part of our agenda. We don't have any minutes, do we?
I didn't see any.
We do not, but I know that we are, Eric is working away diligently and we're going to have a new, we're going to be getting a bunch for the next meeting, so get ready.
Great. Discussion items, so zoning amendments for the September town meeting. First is the town center multi-family amendment.
Sure. I wasn't going to get into them super in-depth tonight, but just wanted to let you guys know. We did submit three articles for.
We did submit three articles for September town meeting. You know, we submitted Town Center multi-family. The regulations from DHDD were supposed to come out in June. They haven't come out yet, so I mean, that's most likely a beginning of conversation, probably continue that... We certainly start the conversation, but I wouldn't... I don't think we're going to get to the September town meeting with that particular one. There's a lot of complexity to it. But we did submit it to start the conversation. The second item is the groundwater separation bylaw, which we had submitted previously. And we are in the process of talking with other departments and conservation. As you guys, as you know, I have to kind of dovetail it in with the stormwater permit as well as some of the Board of Health process. And the last thing we submitted was a proposal to define smoke shops as a standalone retailer, not just as part of... Right now, it's just like a place where they sell periodicals and lottery and, you know, just kind of the convenience store kind of special permit aspect of it, to define smoke shops separately and prohibit them from more districts and only... And allow in BT. And that was just something that we kind of felt might be a direction we might want to go in, so that's what we proposed.
Thank you.
A comment on that?
Please.
If I could. And this is just a general comment. If there are things submitted by the planning board, it would be good if the planning board was in back of it because we look really stupid in front of town meeting when the planning board submits an article and does not recommend favorably. Just my opinion.
I concur.
I can do it because I'm over 75 now.
Happy birthday.
Oh, no, no, I was over 75 many years ago.
Well, happy belated.
But what I'm trying to say is, you know, do you know what I'm trying to say?
I think we all agree.
If the planning board submits something, I get calls from my friends on town meeting going, "What the hell is going on here? Planning board submitted it and they didn't recommend favorably? Why?"
Understood. Understood.
Okay.
All right, folks.
So just quickly, just so these are submitted, they will open with you at our next meeting. As I said, there is a zoning bylaw review meeting. It'd be good to... If we want to talk about them. I think if I haven't sent all the drafts out, I'll send them out.
I was just going to say, if you haven't sent them out, because I don't think I've...
I know I've sent them out to some when we submitted them, but we'll send all the drafts out. They're in drafts, submittal, you know, obviously we haven't opened the public hearing. But to remember Covino's point, it would be good to try to, you know, get our arms around it. And if there are issues, we want to talk about them and tweak the bylaws needed.
Absolutely.
Anyone else?
You have a motion, please?
I do have a subcommittee report.
Oh, I'm sorry?
That's okay. I just wanted to let everybody know about the Sculpture Park. All of the new pieces for the 2022 to 2024 collection have been installed. There is one piece from the original installation, Follow Your Heart, that will be installed next week over near Havoc the Dog, but all of the other new pieces are in. And we are planning a celebratory event. You'll be among the first to hear this because I haven't even told anyone else yet. Tentatively scheduled for August 20th at 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. It will be family-oriented. We have yet to work out the details, but I know it will be wonderful and you will all probably want to attend because it will be so great.
Hot dogs, I'm kidding.
I'm not thinking hot dogs, but I'm thinking maybe ice cream.
I had one other thing I wanted to... Very quickly, before vacation, they were saying, "Who wants this committee? Who wants that committee?" And so they threw me on the housing committee. But they've had a few Zooms that are during the day, so I don't know if I'm a good fit because I don't want to do a bad job and I can't be working and on that committee if it's not going to take place after work. Now, I don't mind putting in if I had to take off to do it, but like the last second if they're saying to Zoom and then do it, it's hard to do.
Understood.
So you can think about it. I mean, I don't mind doing it, but if we think there's going to be a lot of that, I don't know that I would be the perfect person for that.
I think at first, I would want to... We should be talking to them because is this a consistent thing? Because, you know, it's not just you that works a lot of stuff.
Okay, I'm just saying, so I don't know if there's something... I'm not opposed to doing something extra. I just don't know if I was the best fit.
I'm surprised to hear that, though, because honestly, one of the reasons I wanted to get off that committee is because the meetings were all scheduled in the evening.
Well, we just had it 10 to 11:30. It's very difficult to... So I don't know because I'm new to it. Maybe that's a freaky thing, but it might have been. But I'm just saying, just before we get going, I don't want to be on something that I'm not going to do a good job at because I can't do it.
I can kind of do clarify a little bit. So those are not normal meetings. Those were meetings where we were talking about the housing needs assessment and finalizing that. But usually they are at Tuesdays at 5:00 is usually when they meet and I can talk to... We can... You can call me.
I can call... I'll call you, yeah. I don't mind if it's Tuesday, 5:00 o'clock. I can gladly do it, but if she thinks it's going to be... I don't want to do a bad job, but I just find it difficult to do that.
That's fine.
Understood.
All right.
Okay, folks.
Paul, you make the decision. It's up to you.
Yeah. Paul, take the gamble.
Unfortunately, I haven't had the lottery yet.
This is your opportunity to adjourn.
I refuse to.
That's a one of adjourned, though. He's going to say...
This meeting is over.
Paul, is this your last meeting?
I don't know. I just... I would style the process...
Since of my brief time, I have enjoyed working with you so much.
I was going to talk with the chair because I was... I like to think ahead.
Stick around, Paul.
Um...